Finger on the button to reset.
Mine had to be reset.
All right, can I get a motion to call it in? So move, second. Knock on up.
It's yogos dot lesson.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Got it? Got it. Can I get a motion to convene executive session to discuss a number of things? A legal matter and the appointment of a particular more than one person? And another legal matter. So moved. Good. So you get it? Yep. Yep. All right. Thank you. Before we go to public input, I just wanted to note for the public, especially since I know emails have been down, as most of you I think are aware, Katie Graves is not able to be here tonight. She's going to be taking medical leave, potentially indefinitely up until her retirement. We are missing her and hope, wish her the best. Let's move to public input one. If there's anybody here for public input one, please come up to the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please do not mention any individual students' names. And that's it. Anybody here for public input one? All right. All right, you can go right to Colin Janowski is here to provide a presentation on the financial statements.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Michael Leoni. I'm with Colin Janowski. Principal with the organization. Peter Rodriguez apologizes he couldn't be here tonight, but along with him, we were primarily responsible for the oversight of the external audit on June 30th of 2019. Before I go through a brief summary of the financial statement results, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank the board and management for engaging us as the external auditors. As you may or may not know, the external audit is a quite involved process. There's an interim period of time that we come into, we do some testing, and then there's year-end fieldwork. So the cooperation of Lori, Christine, Katie, and the rest of the staff in the business department is critical to us completing that. So I just wanted to extend that debt of gratitude. Talking a little bit about the financial statements, let me just give you a little background. The district is required to file an annual financial statement with the New York State Education Department, as well as the New York State Office of State Comptroller. Management is ultimately responsible for these financial statements, tend to disclose them that way. We, as the external auditors, are required to conduct the audit in accordance with professional standards. Those professional standards are the generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. And those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free and do not have any misstatements. We have finalized that report, issued that report, and the opinion that we've given is known as an unmodified opinion. That's the cleanest opinion that we can render. That means that the financial statements are fairly stated. In addition, the district is subject to government auditing standards, which is compliance with laws and regulations. District has certain reserves, there's a tax levy, so we have to review those things. If we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as it related to that, we would be required to report that to you. We do not have any of those. With that said, moving to the health of the district, I'm just briefly going to go over the general fund. I know that the audit committee previously met with Peter. There was some discussion on the financial statement results and the reserves. So at the end of the year, the general funds, total fund balance increased 677,000 compared to a little over 800,000 in the prior year, which is very positive. Total revenues were 41.3 million, up 1.5 billion from the prior year, primarily because of the tax levy increase. Expenses, expenses increased about 2.56 million, and they were 38.2 million at the end of the year, prior to transfers, because there's a number of transfers that occur between the general fund and the head of funds. The primary drivers for the 2.56 million dollar increase are instructional increases provided for the students, as well as employee benefits, T R S rates, which are controlled by the state, as well as health insurance costs, which are constantly going up. In addition to that, the district was able to fund some additional reserves in the current year, especially a new reserve known as the Teachers Retirements Reserve. They were able to put 359,000 into that reserve. They were also able to fund some additional reserves for the workers' comp, about 260,000, 86 to the employee benefit accrued liability, as well as 500,000 to a capital reserve. And capital reserves are real important, primarily no cost to the taxpayer. Any excess fund balance that you do have per particular year, you can put that back into the district and for capital improvements, and that's very helpful, not having to assess any tax levy for that. So the district closed the year with 1.7 million unassigned fund balance. And that represents 4% of next year's 43 million dollar budget. That's perfectly in line with New York State real property tax law, and so complete compliance with that. That's pretty much a sign of, you know, a good, healthy district. The, we'll talk a little bit about the School Food Service Fund. They had a fund balance increase of about 13,000 compared to a loss of 23,000 in the prior year. That's primarily, revenues were kind of flat, but there was an additional general fund subsidy to support the program since the, since the program had a loss in the prior year. And you did have some additional expenses that increased during the year for benefit supplies and salaries. With respect to internal controls, one thing that's really important to consider, our audit does not involve a test or an opinion on internal controls. Part of our risk assessment, we may look at controls and utilize controls to assess our approach as far as testing. So what happens is we'll issue what is known as a management letter. And that management letter is suggestions, recommendations on improvement in internal controls. So we did issue a management letter during the year. Happy to report that there were a number of comments in the prior year, but seven of those comments were closed in the current year. A number of them are in the process of being closed, and the district is working hard on that. There were two new comments that related to extra classroom and school lunch in the current year, but the district is addressing that, and they will have to submit a corrective action plan by January 15th on that to indicate what their approach is. Other than that, this is, again, this is kind of a summary of the financial statement results and management letter. One other thing that we do have, one other thing that I will mention to you is, and I guess fortunately for us, you don't have any federal funding, so we don't have to do another audit for you knowing there's a single audit. If you did receive over 750,000 in federal funding, we would be required to do a compliance audit, and we don't have to do that, which is a good thing, save you some money. With that said, I don't know if there's any questions or comments, or if anyone has any thoughts about the financial statement. I'm here to answer those questions.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, one of the things that came up in the audit committee when we walked through the report had to do with the the food service program?
Yes.
And that, and that there were some things that hadn't been corrected. And so I just want to share that in the committee, we discussed having a presentation in upcoming board meeting about the program and having a fuller public conversation about the financials related to that program. So I request that get on the agenda, in upcoming agenda.
There's going to be some slides on it tonight, actually.
Oh, there is, there's more to come, it's slides.
Not yet for all of the administrators' reports.
Excellent.
Okay. Is there any commentary from me?
No, I just, we had gotten some suggest, we had just gotten some suggestions from Peter.
Okay, good, good, that's great, that's great. Once again, I apologize, he apologized that he couldn't make it, but if there's any questions or subsequent questions, please feel free, give either one of us a call, more than happy to answer that.
Thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome.
Actually, I have one more question.
Yes.
It was noted in the letter that we, I don't think we had submitted for reimbursement for milk.
Yes.
Is it too late to do that? I mean, it's not an enormous amount of money, but it's, you know, I think it's, was it 6,000 dollars?
Yes.
So 6,000 dollars is 6,000 dollars, so.
Well, during the audit, the issue, and this is a great question, during the audit, the issue did come up, and we did broach the subject, and it appears unfortunately that the district did make attempts to try and see if they could recoup some of this money, but unfortunately, the dead window of opportunity had closed.
So we submitted for that too late, and therefore we couldn't recoup the 6,000?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is, that is our understanding, and that is what has been told to us.
So then what would you recommend? Do we need kind of better processes or controls to make sure we don't miss the windows to recoup those funds?
That's part of, that's part of the comment. And again, this is, part of, part of the issue could be transitioning in staffing, and that has to be managed at the district at a certain level to make sure that you, you don't want to leave money on the table. That's the important thing. So it's, that's why it's a good, good question. But yes, it definitely relates to finding the individuals and employees that can handle that, and cross-training individuals so that they, you know, in the event that you have a transition and you lose some staff, or staff's not available, you can have someone else perform that function. This way that you don't lose out on the reimbursement.
So would you recommend documentation of those procedures so that you have something in writing?
Without a doubt, I think the district internally should be, have some sort of procedures in place in the event where they want to consider cross-training for other individuals that can assist with something like that in the event that this happens, as well as having documentation of what the procedure should be so that in the event that someone leaves, someone can easily pick up those procedures, look at them, and see what they need to do, with guidance, of course. Very good question.
Thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome.
Also just wanted to thank Lori and the whole finance team, because I know you've been short-staffed, and the ability to, you know, make progress on so many of those comments from last year while being short-staffed is pretty great, so big thank you.
Yes, and I'll second that even though I said it already.
In terms of the corrective action plan, so just working backwards, it needs to be filed by January 15th.
Correct.
So Lori, I think you'll let us know when you have a draft ready, and then we have to go over it in the audit committee, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be in touch with Susan as chair of the audit committee as to when we need to schedule a meeting?
Yes.
Great, should we put one on the calendar for sometime in early, in mid-December or something?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. You'll be needing.
All right, we want to do the administrators' report. Start with the principals.
Thanks. Good evening. This is just a quick overview of past events. Of note, the PSAT was administered to 10th and 11th graders on the 16th. We had a presentation that Ms. Motta organized with Peter Ben and Buskirk on the 19th, and the superintendent's conference day was the 5th of November. And at the high school, half of the day, the majority of staff was spent listening to some speakers that Superintendent Graves lined up. One in particular was outstanding, sitting superintendent from, what's his name? And then the second half of the day, the majority of faculty worked on our I V evaluation that's happening this year. You have to go through that every five years, and Mr. Guyan is spearheading that, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done over part of the faculty, so that afternoon is not doing that. Just some pictures here, theory of knowledge, which is one of the required elements of the diploma program for the students down in pre-K. Mr. Guyan, you have any comments on that?
So it was just a great lesson where they were able to, part of the classes, they investigate claims to knowledge. It's an epistemology class, a philosophy of knowledge class, so they decided that what they would do was go and see what a fourth grader knows, and it turns out that they know a lot.
This is a college application workshop. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the deadline for early decision for our students, or for most students, is November 1st. So we had 18 students this year apply early decision, which is the highest number that we've had. So we'll see what happens. Students usually hear back from those schools in and around December 15th. Just some pictures. Looking at a student in the bottom. It's very funny. We actually, we're going to Bay Street, I believe, on the 19th, and the middle school went today, is that right?
Yep.
For Literature Live, which is a great program that Bay Street puts on.
Seniors went on Friday, it's special.
Friday, exactly.
It was great.
And you can read the rest of this, but culminating with the Early Release Trail on the 20th of December. So it's a busy time of year, a lot of concerts, those types of things. So the next month, month and a half is a busy time. So do you want me to cover this slide real quickly?
You, or I know Brittany's worked on it, so.
Yeah, Brittany worked on it.
We don't take ownership here, we're not a big deal.
This is, this is everybody chipping in, because we don't have a superintendent right now. So thank you even for getting started on this one.
So I had Lori Baum help with this as well, I talked to her this morning. Basically, when you look at the expenses and the revenues related to the cafeteria program, 1819 versus 1718, you do notice an increase in a couple of areas. One of them is a move towards more sustainable products. Those numbers are not significant, the bulk of the increase, which was around 70,000, 66,000 of that was related to increased benefits and compensation related to employees. So roughly 90, 90% of that is related to that, I think. And we can provide a more thorough breakdown in that meeting, about 66 of the 70.
I just want to add, in many districts, they, their, the cafeteria staff is accounted for as regular staff, and it's not accounted for in their P and L for the, for their lunchroom. So if you see reports from other districts, it's important just to be able to understand whether they're capturing their personnel costs in their, in their cafeteria P and L.
Right.
So.
And then just a kudos to the one staff for following the wellness policy, which was a big deal to go through the board. All of the products down there are sustainable, so anything being thrown out is degradable or compostable. The majority of it, took like 90% of it, which is a huge change. And our cafeteria staff, when they purchase stuff, wants to make sure it's local and sustainable, so kudos to them, because it's not an easy job when you're under credit.
Any questions about the cafeteria program? Okay. On to the middle school, thanks.
So we just went to Bay Street today to see Lit Live, the kids saw Raisin in the Sun, and also goes with our board goal to increase awareness of culturally responsiveness and being aware of diversity, because out here it can be a lack of diversity, as we know. The makeup field trip for Adventure Park panned out, there was no rain, it might have been a bit cold, but our sixth graders went on that. Red Ribbon Week was a success. And then last Friday, which was our biggest event so far, we raised over 2,000 dollars for middle school trips, which I'm excited for, for the ball ball, and thanks to everybody involved, because it took an army to transform that gymnasium, and then also the experience for the kids. And thank you to the Schumachers and Mr. Stewart for playing as the kids dance the entire time when they volunteer their time to play for the kids as a band. So here are some, this is the Adventure Park. So it's a high ropes course, but you have to get through it through perseverance and coaching. This is door decorating for Red Ribbon Week. This was the field day challenge, thanks to Mr. Bramhoff for creating controlled chaos in the gymnasium. The kids loved it. This is trivia, Mr. Rainey and Mr. Fridge led this, and Mr. Kahoot, and it was very competitive, and I think the loudest it's ever been in the library, so Miss Wollapton wasn't so happy, but the kids were. And then our escape room, organized and designed by Ms. Westoff. It was a little bit harder this year, which the kids were complaining about, but I think that's okay to be challenged. And then our upcoming events, so you can see what's going on, winter concerts are happening, the snowflake, our annual snowflake day the Friday before. We are continuing our relationship with the It Takes Two documentary film festival. So our seventh graders are going to go over to Bay Street to see the documentary film festival and experience what a documentary film is, and then Mr. Fridge always brings that back into his curriculum through his ELA curriculum. So that's what's going on. It's a busy time of year. And Ms. Reynolds?
Hello. So a couple of events, the elementary school, past events, big standout in any elementary school, I think, was Halloween, and we'll see the pictures a few slides ahead. We launched the food drive, which is something that we are very proud of. All the food that's collected in the elementary school goes entirely to local Sag Harbor families in need. And it's something that's spoken about pretty often between now and Thanksgiving at morning program, and it's done in a way that I feel is very real to the kids, using real math and ratios and percentages, so they get to really see the active collection that's going on on a daily basis. Our school counselor, Michelle Grant, does a phenomenal job with that. November 8th, we had Veterans Day celebration at school. We invited local veterans to school for breakfast, and also honoring them in morning program. Code Drive is going on still in school, and also at the John Germain Library. We paired up as another drop-off location. The fire department, local fire department came in to speak to the kids. Just, of course, awareness and exposure is key, just so they're familiar with firemen and the kind of work that they do in different scenarios in the home and in the community. And also just to have kids feel comfortable with not only what they look like, but even the, the sounds that come when they wear those masks, which could be scary to any young child. So again, just the idea of exposing them to what that might be like in the event of an emergency. Here we had two kids who completely on their own decided to fundraise for the Bahamas when they heard of the tragic events that occurred in the Bahamas. They took it upon themselves to set up a station at the clubhouse in East Hampton, and they collected that evening, I think it was a little over 1,000 dollars, that was sent entirely to the Bahamas, and again, it's something that they initiated entirely on their own. And if I may say, it's really something that in our school, we really encourage as far as the idea of what one little person could do. It's something that's been a theme, and I think it was about two years ago, just the idea of community service, not only local but abroad. Room, what, room, not Room on Room, the witches, Mr. Malone's Room? The Room on a Room?
Room on Room.
Okay, yes, an annual event. The shed performers, the teachers actually put this on every year around this time for Halloween. Room on Room, a lot of fun. And then some Halloween pictures, thank goodness, the weather held out, so we were able to have the parade. Everyone was kind of at the edge of their seat, up until a very moment when we got to walk into town. And then the photo to the left is the spooky skeletons. So our music department puts on a concert for everyone outside on the field. Some more pictures, Mr. Malone and I to the left, Mr. Malone is a pilot. And to the right, I am the train conductor for all aboard a learning journey, her school theme this year. Some more pictures. This is fourth grade project adventure, which is done on the school grounds. So it's the idea of team building and working together, strategizing and problem solving. This is the launch to our food drive, a gun shed performers acting out theme for people in need, and ideas for what could be brought in during the food drive. Some Veterans Day pictures, it's the breakfast. Some kids did some artwork that they gave to the veterans there at the morning program. Mr. Malone can speak to this a little bit if you can apply.
We are extremely proud of the outdoor learning space at our elementary school, our greenhouse and our gardens, and Corinne Olson, since its inception, has been a true leader with this whole program. This year, we nominated her for an award, it's sponsored by Cornell's Ag and Life Sciences College, New York Agriculture in the Classroom. And although she did not win the Teacher of Honor Award, they were so impressed with the application that they actually called us on Friday, and they're offering to provide Ms. Olson a scholarship to the National Convention at the end of the school year in Salt Lake City. So it's a nice honor and a nice way of acknowledging what's going on in her classroom and in the building.
She's dynamic. Thank you. And then upcoming events, the book fair, they started setting up today, the PTA is hosting that event. It'll go on until Friday. Parent-teacher conferences are next week. Kids will be dismissed at 11:15. Monday, Tuesday, parent-teacher conferences, and Monday is the evening portion. Thanksgiving recess, and of course looking ahead to December, Ginger Bird Night, a big event in our school. Winter concert, and then the Early Release Trail just before the winter break.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I wasn't able to upload the slides that I had prepared for this evening. We have a, we've had a very busy fall, and in fact, I don't even know what season we're in right now. We have fall sports finishing up, we have winter sports starting up. It's been a very successful fall, and it's looking like it's going to be a very successful winter season as well. We have, we have a huge participation numbers at the middle school level for basketball and girls volleyball. We have over 80 kids that are participating at that right off the gate. And then we have, we just finished our varsity basketball and junior varsity basketball tryouts, which went pretty well. And we have some fall teams that are still competing, so as an update from the fall, we had a, our field hockey team won the Suffolk County Championship and lost a tight game to Car Place in the Long Island Championship. Our, our cross-country girls team won the team Class D county championship, and they represented us this past weekend up at the New York State Finals up in Plattsburgh. It was a balmy 3 degrees, and it looked more like a cross-country course. And it looked more like a cross-country course, like skiing, than it was for running. We had several outstanding athletes represent the school. One, one of note was Penelope Green, who finished in the top ten. She finished seventh place in the state, and she should be commended for that, an exceptional job up there. As all the girls that went up there, including Ben Mack, who also represented our boys team up there. They really braved the elements, but it was fairly nice to see that we had team representation for our section. Currently, in the fall, we still have our girls swimming. We have a representative from our school in Chiara, she's gonna be swimming at the States. And we also have our volleyball team, which is practicing this week to go up to the final four for the second time in school history. We had a, we had a lot of success out east this, this fall. We made a concerted effort with the, with our neighboring athletic directors, because the majority of the Class C and D schools are located out east. What we decided to do is we decided to try to hold as many county finals as we can on this side of the Shinnecott Canal, or at least on this side of Riverhead. We had our volleyball game out at Greenport, the Suffolk County Championship a week ago. And it was, it was very well attended, it was just a great atmosphere. And, you know, I, speaking to Greenport, Shelter Island, and all the other schools that were involved, Matituck, they were just enthused that we could do it on such a large scale with such small schools. And so we're gonna be making a push to be able to do that. And other than that, we're, we're moving forward. We're looking for a very successful indoor winter season, as I said. And yep, that's where we're at with athletics. I'll take any questions. All right, thank you for your time. These are some pictures, they're a little dated. Mr. Fisher?
Good evening. As everyone is aware by now, unfortunately, the district was a victim of a cyber attack, which took place on the Fourth of November. In response to that attack, we've made every attempt to keep the community up to date with as much information as we have to provide. So we sent out a notification on the Fourth of November that evening, immediately notifying the community. We sent out a follow-up email on the Sixth, and then just last evening, we sent out another update. The update that we sent last night is essentially all the information we have to share at this point with the public. My limited IT staff has been working very hard over the past couple of weeks with the outside security firm to, to respond to this situation and to recover. And they've done a great job, so I really wanna to, to give them a little bit of praise. But I also wanna thank, I mean, the administrators, the community to some extent, but certainly the, the staff, the faculty, and even the students have just been tremendously patient with this whole process. It's unfortunately very time consuming, and everybody's been extremely understanding and willing to take the proper amount of time to make sure that we address this properly. And that's greatly appreciated. Currently, our efforts are underway to restore all of the systems, utilizing the available backups that we had at our disposal. Student and employee data reside offsite in a secure cloud-based environment. Our e-school system is housed elsewhere, our financial system is housed elsewhere. So that added additional layers of security. We have no evidence of any type of data being compromised on either of those systems at this point. We also have no indication that we have any data loss whatsoever. We have everything on a backup. And once we've, once we've had the opportunity to adequately scan that data to make sure that it doesn't contain any type of problem, then we'll be able to restore that, that information. In addition to that, at this time, there is also no evidence that there was any type of data extraction at all, including student, family, and employee information. I just want to make that very clear, get that update, because we have absolutely nothing to indicate that at this time. So we're steadily coming back online. Our main offices, for the most part, are up and running. Certainly not at a hundred percent, but at least hopefully able to operate and get the basic tasks done. The student and faculty devices are also in the process of being brought online. All of the Chromebooks have done what we call a power wash to them. They've been completely wiped and basically refreshed and added to. The new network that we've established, part of the process of, of bringing us back online was to create a clean network that had no devices that have been impacted, ever touched it. So that took a little bit of time to create that network. These devices, you'll notice there's a green dot on them, that means they were scrubbed in their back and able to be on what we are referring to as the green network. The teacher laptops, on the other hand, we've had no indication of any type of infection with the teacher laptops, but just out of security, before we are able to put them onto that network, we are wiping those completely, completely reformatting them and installing all the new software as a fresh installation before we add them to the, to the new network. It's bad timing, of course, anytime, but now especially the teachers are in the middle of grade reporting for the high school here. Thankfully, the elementary school is on a trimester schedule, so it didn't impact them as greatly. But the teachers here, what we did was we provided them with Chromebooks, and because the systems that we use, or the system we use for the student information system, e-school data is web-based and is hosted elsewhere and in the cloud, they were able to at least get to their e-school data system to be able to, to the grade reporting. So that process has not been deleted. At this time, the visitor security check-in systems are both back online at the front desk in both buildings, and that's just as of today that we got the elementary school back up and online. So when you come in, you should be prompted to provide ID and have it scanned and get a printed badge again. The cafeteria system, we're making great progress with that today as well. We hope to have that fully functional. It has not been down, so to speak. In other words, the students have been able to check out. But the updates from the system where payments are made have not been making it to the cafeteria system because we've severed that connection. So once we bring the system back up and online, all of that information that's housed in my school box will make its way to our internal system. So, so no information will be lost there either, and the students' accounts will have an accurate balance at that point. So what remains is the, the security and the camera system. Those are offline right now. Sounds absurd, but just out of an abundance of caution. We, we scanned those systems too, those independent systems, but we ran scans on those systems to make sure that somehow they were not affected by this. And as of right now, they have not been affected by this. Unfortunately, the process to bring them back online is a little bit more time consuming. Because we built the new network, we have to get every one of the hundred and eighty plus cameras and the system moved over to the new network. So that's why that's taken a little bit longer than we expected. The same with the system that we use to print the ID cards for staff members, as well as the BYOG network. You might notice that there is a wireless network up and in place, but there's not a network specifically for users bringing their own device into the network. And that's because we're, we're building that up from the ground up as well. So in addition to, you know, the software restrictions we have on that network, there's also going to be additional physical restrictions imposed on that network to keep it separate and apart from the, the rest of the network. So unfortunately, I don't have a definitive date where I could tell you that everything will be a hundred percent and, and back online. I can tell you, we are making continual progress, and we're gonna keep working on it until, until we get everything up and running. Any questions on that before I move on?
I first wanna say thank you for all the work that you've been doing. And I'm actually really pleased at how many protections were already in place before this happened that made this much better than it could have been. I think it could have been a lot worse.
Yes.
So I just wanna thank you and congratulate you for being proactive and having those security things in place. My only question is, do we, do we have any sense of who or how?
At this point, we do not. That is a part of this process though, but I'll be, I'll be very honest with you. My focus has been on trying to get us back up and keeping us, you know, secure as we go back. I don't wanna revisit this, so I'm gonna make sure that everything is in place to make sure that we don't have to experience this again. But that will definitely be a part of the process that's being explored in the backend by the security company. We've provided them with enough information that hopefully they'll be able to come to some sort of a conclusion. That's our goal.
Scott, I know we're, I think, approving the contract with Core BTS tonight. Would you mind just going over a little bit about the function that they provided us and?
Sure. So Core BTS is a computer company that we, that we utilize for networking support, backend stuff. So when we're doing servers or we're doing things of that nature, we rely on Core to help us to be integrated with, with the manufacturer. Core also has a separate division that exists explicitly for the purpose of responding to attacks like this, whether it be in the educational landscape or whether it be in the corporate landscape. So we were very fortunate that while this was happening, we had that resource at our disposal that we were able to pick up the phone and call them, and they responded immediately. And they, they provided us with some valuable information almost immediately and some steps that we could take to try to get us back online. So they've done everything from, from, as I mentioned, capturing information that we have. We've been sending it off to them, for it to be scanned to make sure that there's no other vulnerabilities. I'm talking the, the bigger backend stuff, not the local files. And they've, they've provided us with some direction in terms of what we need to do with the local devices before we can do it. And they've also assisted greatly in establishing the new green network so that we can go from what they're calling the, lack of a better term, the dirty network. It was a staged approach from a dirty network to a gray network to a green network. So the green network is the final network, and they've been instrumental in being able to aid us in getting all the information that we had, as you mentioned before, the backups and the, and the files that we can use to bring us back up online. But, but they've been instrumental in getting us back up online and, and bringing those systems back to life. So they've been very helpful to us.
Is the cost, thank you for that, is the, the cost of, of their services covered by insurance?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so, because I think a question came up about what we anticipate the cost of their services to be.
Yeah. I, I did receive some information from them tonight, both about where we're at and some projection. But it was not detailed enough for me to present at this point. I don't feel comfortable putting a flat number out there. I would like to get some, a better breakdown from them, but it literally came in about 5:15 tonight. But I want more information about specifically, you know, what relates to what. Because simultaneous to this, we, we were already working on projects, and I just wanna make sure that, that those projects that we've already, you know, committed to and in a sense paid for are not somehow coming up. I wanna make sure there's a, a clean line between them, that we're being only billed for things that have nothing to do with the project. So I have no doubt whatsoever that they're doing everything right. They've been a terrific company to work with, but I just, I don't have that comfort level that I can put out there yet until I have a chance to go through that and analyze that.
That makes sense. So once you do have it, you know, how much it's gonna cost, and you can confirm that it's covered by insurance, or if it's, the part of it is not, then what that cost is, I think that'd be helpful just to share.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. As soon as I, I have that, I'll certainly make that available. But my understanding as of, as of now is that we, we do have the cybersecurity insurance, and that will take care of.
Except for the deductible.
Sure.
Right. And I think the update that was sent was really helpful. And I, and I think just sending at least a weekly update is helpful for people just because even if there's not a lot, you can tell them just to be checking in so they know. Because in the absence of the update, people are like, how come we haven't heard anything? So I think, I think it's good to, to send that frequently.
Kinda, you know, it, it happens a little at a time, so once we're at a point where there was enough information that it made sense to share, because to just send out the same message each day or every couple of days makes sense. But finally this weekend, we, we kinda crossed the threshold that it made sense to, to start putting out some more information. So certainly we'll try our best to keep the community up to date, both on the status of the project, but also the finances as well. And I know, I'm hoping to talk a little bit more about this in, in detail later, but the Sag Harbor Learning Center, that's still going on as well, and we're still making nice progress there. Some of the audiovisual equipment at this point is now in the process of being installed, which will be very helpful down there. And the installation of the cameras and the security devices, that's scheduled to begin very soon as well. So we are continuing to, to move forward with the process down at the Learning Center. So I don't know, is, Tim, are you gonna speak or talk?
If Tim's going.
Tim, okay. So it's, Tim's gonna give greater detail about where things are at at the Learning Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we'll go from left to right. At the top is the gym. Those, the lights are in, the ceilings are whited out. Paul's had his guys in there painting some of the hoops and miscellaneous items in the gym. The back drive-through has been paved and is complete. All the concrete, everything exterior has been complete. All the joints are silicone, everything's done outside. The bottom one is some of the new panels that are going in in the boiler room. Same thing on the left, those panels on the top are the controls, power for the controls in the boiler room. The picture to the right are the rails for the elevator. And the one on the bottom is the platform for the elevator that was installed and on Friday. The sailboat frames are all installed. The top left is the instruction classroom downstairs. The floor is in, the walls and ceilings are complete, with the exception of a few tiles for access to the ceiling. Case work is installed. And the office is downstairs and three of the classrooms upstairs, which is a little bit ahead of schedule. The bottom left is carpeting in the business offices downstairs and one of the mechanical, one of the thermostats that they're installing this week. I don't know if you, I'll touch on our milestone schedule. I think Ed sent those out this week. There's, we're on schedule or ahead of schedule. Pretty much every line item there, we have, I'll go to line twenty-two, that we had a delay on the ceiling grids. All those ceiling grids are, are now in. We have a slight delay on the elevator that doesn't affect any of the overall schedule. Has nothing to do with anything construction-wise. It's training-related and union-related. Has nothing to do with the project. But I just received an email this afternoon that it wouldn't affect our overall schedule. We have a startup scheduled on December twelfth for the elevator. They told me that that was gonna be on time. So in terms of delays, I don't, those are the only two that I have right now. And one is kinda out of that portion of it. The ceiling grids are in, we're moving forward with that. Didn't delay anything as far as any installation or any other trades. We're, I believe, gonna start doing some of the other office floors. In the basement, we're working on getting some heat. The heat is in the building. We're working on getting some heat in the gym so we can make sure that we have enough time to get that floor in.
There's a question about the gym.
Sure.
That's insulated, correct? The CLA, the roof and every, the room is insulated?
What, I'm not sure what you're asking. Which, what room?
The gym?
No, it's not.
The gym is not insulated. It's insulated in terms of what was there currently. When we tore out the old grid and ceilings in the gym, there was insulation in those. There was. was terrible. The funding for this through state contract has had to be repaired as opposed to new construction. Insulation was not able to be installed, is my understanding at the time, because it was repair as opposed to new construction.
You mean we legally could insulate the?
We could. I think we probably could, and we can at any point. That was, that was the reason that we went that route, is because it can be done at any point, the same as it was when we, when we removed it. There are bats that just go above the ceiling that can be installed at any point.
So could we fund it the way we did with the playground?
Excuse me?
So for the installation, you know, how we went with the playground, that we paid for it separately, not through the contract. So could we do like in the future the installation that way?
Yes, I believe so. But that's, but that's, I believe that's the reason it was omitted this time around, is because we went through the state aid as opposed to that being a separate project and going out to bid. They tried to do that as we were doing the other, other, the other roofing system, we had them there.
What's the impact of not insulating the roofs?
I can't answer that. I, I, I don't know what that overall impact is.
Because if you're heating a building and the roof's not insulated, I would imagine it would drive up your heating costs, no?
I would say. I mean, I, like I said, I'm not, that portion of it was, I know it was considered at the time when the funding, they were trying to set up this funding to get the roofing system done. I don't know all those particulars.
Yeah, I'm only asking because that, as a board member, I was unaware that that decision was made. So it might be helpful to understand what the financial impact could be of that decision, because that might influence how soon we would want to insulate it, if it's going to drive up costs or discomfort, right? So if you're not the person, maybe you can help us, help Paul figure out who the person would be.
I can, I'll be glad to take that back with me tonight, and I'll convey that to IBI in the morning.
And just to clarify, there's only heating. There's no AC?
In the gym. Yeah, that's going to really be very cozy.
Yes. It, it really wasn't, to be honest, wasn't too bad this summer. There's plenty of windows and it was, it was fairly comfortable. It wasn't as bad as oppressing as you would think.
Yeah. It may be different when you have like sixty kids in there.
People in there and stuff.
The insulation can be added at any time.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that. I was just curious what the impact and cost would be, that's all.
Oh, gym isn't, this gym is not.
Yeah, it's horrible in gym. We've had to cancel, we've had to cancel stuff, because they're.
I don't, I don't know. Do you want me to go through all the line items and the milestone schedule? Like I said, I think we're all on, we're, anything that's on there, up to date, as of Sunday, we're on schedule or ahead of schedule at the moment.
Terrific. So then you're on schedule to turn the building over to the district on December 31st?
As it stands right now, yes. Barring any other, you know, I don't know what the outcomes of the walls or liabilities or anything else. Construction-wise, what we have on our schedule will be, there will be, there's a couple items. The entrance doors for the gym aren't scheduled for delivery until the 7th of January. They're trying to expedite those. That overall item isn't on our schedule. That's part of, that's separate from the general construction under, under the initial project. That was an add-on. So that's the difference in delay. We'll have the, I believe, the main entrance doors are in transit. They'll be going in hopefully by the end of the week. Everything, I talked to Scott's guys today. I believe they're getting ready to man up this week, to start putting cameras in and do a little security part of it. So I think overall, it's, we're pretty much aligned with where we should be.
Great. So the gym door coming January 7th wouldn't prevent the building from being used for any reason?
No.
Terrific.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Give you an update on the memorial workout station. The last time I think we let off, we talked about was that we weren't sure about the overlap zone. So we did a little bit of research and we got a letter from Nicer, which is our insurance carrier, and they recommend that we have a nine-foot buffer between the two pieces of a piece. So currently, we're at about six and a half feet. So one of those pieces are going to have to be moved. So that, that was through their recommendation, as well as on the next one. And there's, there's this public safety handbook, and it tells you right in that yellow area there on the right, that it also says nine feet between the two pieces. So I believe when we had it installed, they put on the assumption that it was going to be six feet. So we're going to have to move it. So last week, Mrs. Graves had a little discussion with me about what we're going to do about it. And she asked me if it would be possible to have my staff finish the project. And I said I had no problem taking that over. You know, if you guys have five years' support with that, I think it would be the fastest way to get it done. I think my guys are more qualified to do it, and I'll be out there supervising them. Now hopefully we can get this thing done and done properly and have it ready to go for people to start using it. That's basically the little map right now.
If you get the board's, thank you for that update. If you get the board's support, just an estimated timeframe, like how much time you think it'll take to finish?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Right.
I'd like to jump on as soon as possible.
Sooner before it gets colder, right?
Maybe even start it tomorrow or the next day.
So the only issue is starting it tomorrow. So first, we need to get the will of the board on this. But before that, the only other thing, I think, just to tie up any kind of loose ends on this, I know when Mr. Harvey was here at the last meeting discussing it, there was mention that the playground equipment is, the PlayStation equipment is owned by the Dog Patch Bandits at this point, which is true. We haven't actually passed a resolution. They haven't actually sent us a letter donating it, and we haven't passed a resolution accepting it. So just, I think, before anyone in-house touches, moves it, we just need to clean that up and make sure that we are the owners of the movement.
We've talked about having another meeting later this week, just because there's some pressing issues. So, you know, I would hope that we can pull it together so we could do it later this week, so not to delay and have the weather get in the way. And also acknowledge those volunteers who raised money and supplied the equipment and have worked on this initiative, have done so in such a positive spirit and collaboration. And I want to recognize that and say thank you to them, and make sure we can, you know, can communicate that to them, what we're hoping to do. I'm assuming they'll be delighted that we can get it done quickly.
I think it's the best thing to do is, you know, we're concerned with liability about how volunteers do it, and, you know, I think this would be the best way to get this done as quickly as possible.
We really appreciate that, that offer. Is everyone on the board okay with it?
Couldn't we do the will of board now pending there?
That's what I'm thinking, because yeah. Is everybody okay with, with that?
I think we got to get it done. It's been months. I don't understand, but.
I just, I want it to be done.
It's crazy. It's not you, but I'm saying the process is crazy.
It's taken months to get this done.
Let's just get it done.
So I'd like to get it done before the cold weather sets. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is the School Business Administrators Report.
Okay. I had handed out a sheet. These are the, the two vendors, contractors that I actually received copies of their proposals.
Excuse me, can I suggest you get her podium so you're on camera? Do you mind?
My hand drew out a sheet that had given the, a couple of proposals that we have received from the two contractors, all right, that I have had a chance to look at. There is another contractor that has sent, I believe, proposals up to IBI, but I have not received anything back as far as approval for change order or use of their allowances. So right now, additionally, we have about $38,000 on Palace Electric and additional $15,000 on DNS Mechanical. And I indicated the various reasons why the proposed amounts were needed. And mainly has to do with things that we found or added on. For example, the rewiring for the refrigerator units that we didn't have in, that we weren't going to do. The auditorium or the gym area, which we originally weren't doing, that we, when they went into the lighting, they had bad wiring and it was dangerous to even, you know, turn on a switch. For the mechanical services, part of it was, we found a leak under the floor of the gymnasium. We can't turn on the heat until the leak is fixed. So these are things that we really need to do to move forward with the project. As I find other, I, IBI forwards change orders that they've approved, because even if they're proposed, sometimes IBI negotiates with the contractors, says other things are, and they'll go and lower or change the amount. So you can see on the one example that the light installation was proposed by Palace for $10,544, but IBI only approved it for the $8,950. So with the contractors, until I actually get a change order or a change in use of an allowance, I'm not going to really know what the cost is going to be to the district. And as soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Are these additional costs still within the budget? The money that's been allocated for the project? Or are we going to have to transfer from other funds?
Right now, it's covered, but there's things cost out there that I still don't know. For example, the wall, all right. I know that we're probably going to be hit by an architect charge for designing the wall. And then the actual charge itself of building the wall, we were told originally like $125,000 for the wall. Now, I understand that cost might be higher. So until we actually go out to bid, we're not going to know. So, I mean, these costs, I think that we can probably absorb in full's budget. It'll have to do with a little less upon other things.
I don't know if it's related to report, but a couple meetings back, Jennifer Basimi came and presented the financials. But I understand that that was kind of an abbreviated discussion. There was no availability to Q and A. And I was under the impression that she was going to be coming back to finish that conversation. I thought it was at this meeting based on previous emails. So do we have that lined up yet?
It was supposed to be tonight. She wasn't able to make it, so we'll have to find another time.
Okay, good. I think that would just be helpful, so that we really.
But I think we should all feel very comfortable asking Lori any questions since she's our acting.
Right. But, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to bring up the report that was done right now and ask you all the spot questions on that. I think that would be unfair.
But if you, if you have questions regarding the report that was previously given, you can certainly ask me, because especially on anything current, I might not have been here when, you know, but anything for this year, I'm definitely familiar with. And I did a lot of the work, all right, in putting together the report, so.
Which is helpful. And I think we didn't give an opportunity for the public to ask. And I know there were people who came to the meeting hoping to ask. So I would request that it get on the agenda as a formal agenda, so that we can, we can circle back and finish the conversation that was started. I know I have, I have questions related to the document that was provided. Was different than my understanding. I went back to the original documents and the original financials from 2016. They didn't match up with some of what was in that report that came from 2017. So just that reconciliation. But I will email those questions ahead of time.
Okay, that's great.
So that, so that everybody has the right information.
Okay. And you give me enough of your time, because, you know, right now, we are shorting the business office.
Absolutely.
All right. And we're juggling a lot, including, you know, I still have the answer to the management letter to do. So it's quite a, you know, bit on the plate.
Quite a lot on the plate.
And it goes for members of the public also. Anyone can email the board of that with questions regarding the financial updates, and we can make sure those get forwarded along. Or going up the chain of command, they can email the finance department directly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then we're on to the consent agenda. Everybody, I'm sure you're logged in. Again, a motion to approve items 8.1, 3, 8.32.
I had asked that the treasurer report be pulled from the consent agenda.
You asked for it to be pulled?
Yeah, in the email I sent you. And I had a list of questions around it.
Well, I thought we sent you the answers somehow.
But you know what, though? I am satisfied. I'll abstain, and I can get my answers. On that one issue, I'll abstain from voting, and I can get my answers after the meeting. So don't hold it up. I had questions about several adjustments. I, I gave you a list of the five adjustments I had questions on. So I'm going to choose to abstain just from that, so I asked to be pulled back, so I can.
Sorry, you have a right.
I didn't know if we changed it, so I was waiting.
Right, so that is six yes and abstain.
But did you pull out that one item in your?
Well, you said you're abstaining.
No, I'm standing from that one item.
I'd have to pull it from everybody. Okay. We'll pull that item.
Because I'm not, I'm not allowed to abstain from the other ones, because I don't have legitimate reasons.
So then you're voting yes for the?
I am.
It's seven, zero. I'm going to have to do a treasure report second. I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for, what's it, July? No, it moved. It's still there, actually. I can't move it right there. Which, which number is it?
Eight, one, six.
Eight, six there. The treasurer's report for July and August 2019. Any discussion? Okay, so you have questions, so now it's an action item.
No, I'm abstaining. I've got a long diverse of questions about adjustments, so I'll abstain. I get the answers, so.
Okay.
It's fine.
So we're going to have to just take it by hand.
Okay.
All up here? Six, any additions?
And you have the email with the questions, so if you just forward it up, I can get them.
I get a motion to approve item 9.1, accepting Karen Mullins, senior office assistant, letter of retirement.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank her for all her years of service to the district. And I'm assuming that at a future date, when we talk about retirements, we'll hear about her commitment and years to help this district.
I get a motion to approve item nine, oh, sorry. Chris, what's your, oh, yes. That's unanimous. I get a motion to approve item 9.2, the core of the TS contract.
Second.
Any discussion?
Now, we should just note that the reason why it doesn't have a financial in here is because we're not sure of the financial effect yet, because it's an ongoing, ongoing work. That needs to go down, right? Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
That's unanimous, thank you. Motion to approve the Colin and Danowski management letter.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? And the financial statements, I realize it's both. Any discussion?
No.
That's unanimous, thank you. And a motion to, um, accept, uh, nine point four, accept Claudia Ortman, teaching assistant, letter of retirement.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Thank you for your assistance.
Can I get a motion?
Oh, just a second, I'm waiting for Alan.
Would you go?
Okay.
Okay, that's unanimous. Yeah, a motion to approve memorandum of agreement with teachers association of South Harbor and administrators association of South Harbor, um, for the assignment of duties and stipend for a CSE chairperson effective November nineteenth through June thirtieth.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Moving on to. I'm sorry, Chris, yes, that's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to policy items, um, we had had multiple reads of the non-resident policy, um, and then we just failed to, at the next meeting, um, have a vote to adopt it. So, um, can I get a motion to adopt policy seven one three two, non-residents students?
So moved.
Second, any, any discussion? Just waiting for your votes. That's unanimous, thank you. Committee reports, are there any updates from any committees that anyone would like to share? Alright, no, no, one's by twice, okay. Um, so we're gonna go to public input two. Is there anybody here that would like to speak at public input two? Please come up to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes to speak and please don't mention any individualities. Alright, so with that, um, can I get a motion to convene an executive session to discuss, um, security procedures in the district?
So moved. Second.
All of you, yes? Chairman? Are we waiting for this to come out? Yeah. I'm trying to.